All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Farmington Board of Education meeting for Monday, September 23rd, 2019. If we could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Next item on the agenda, number three, approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 9th, 2019 Board of Education meeting?
Motion, second.
Any questions, comments, revisions, changes? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, absentions?
Absentions.
Next item on the agenda, 5B, teacher grant check presentation, excuse me, from the Farmington Public School Foundation.
So every year, our Farmington Public School Foundation comes to the board meeting and gives you an overview of the teacher-initiated grants that were accepted for this school year and funded by the foundation. And I did see Rich and Rich here. I want to just remind everyone, November 1st, yes, we have our trivia fee. We could have a board team, could have a central office team. It's a really, it's a fun night, November 1st. It'll be the fifth annual trivia night.
It's an 80's theme.
Back to the 80's.
80's trivia?
That makes it even better.
Thriving trivia, wow, Bill.
I'm playing by myself.
I can't wait to see what you wear.
They're still in the closet.
So we'll call you up and you can present the check for this year. I know you had accepted several of the grants and funded several of the grants.
Great. Thank you. So on behalf of the Farmington Public School Foundation, we would like to present this check to the school for, reading down this way, $10,463 to fund the teacher-initiated grants for 2019. So, thank you. So if we can get a...
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
You can give it.
Oh, here.
The actual check here.
Yes. And the grants were provided to Noah Wallace, West District, Westwood's Union School, Irving Robbins, a second one to Noah Wallace in East Farms. So with that $10,000, they funded several teacher-initiated grants. Fantastic. Thank you so much to our foundation.
There are left, well, Rich and Rich, thank you very much. But thank you, we can't do, you know, do what we do without the support of the foundation. So it's greatly, greatly appreciated. Okay. Next item, 5C, summer school programs report.
So this is a report you receive every year, gives you an overview. Actually, should I switch this around because we have so many? Yes. So we have several people here, so could we move D up?
Sure. Okay. Can I have a motion to move 5D up on the agenda so it will be the new 5C?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, absentions? Okay. So now the new 5D will be 5C. We will now do the SEL committee recommendations.
So after a year-long study by teachers and administrators in Farmington, we're launching our social and emotional learning report. Lori Singer and Kim Nguyen were, they co-chaired this committee. And you can see that we have Lori here at the table. Lisa, Carrie, Kelly will provide an overview of the report. This is very similar to how we engage and work in Farmington when we see an issue or an area that we need to grow in. We typically do have a committee of teachers and administrators come together. And just like FHS was talking about, they socially construct the learning together. And we're just so proud of the committee's work. You have a list within the report of all the committee members. I do see some of the committee members out in the audience. So thank you to our teachers who also participated in this committee. And I remember hearing last year, Kim saying, "I think this is my favorite committee ever." So I'll turn it over to Kim.
Thank you, Kathy. You know, the five of us met together regularly last year to kind of plan for this work, to shape the work of the committee. And I think we were a great team together, but it was most exciting and wonderful to have approximately 30 teachers with us in the work and meeting together. So I want to acknowledge all of them publicly. However, I'd really love, because they came out tonight at 7:00 at night, I'd like them to stand if they would and just briefly say hello, your name, where you work, so that we can just properly thank you for being a part of this.
Want to start it?
I'm Mr. Freddie K., 12th Department Head, Health, PE, and Wellness.
I'm a social worker, townwide with a care team.
Hi, I'm Ryan Evers, a special ed teacher on the care team as well, townwide.
Kathy Sullivan, East Farms Elementary School, music.
Marie Canseleri, Westwood, 6th grade.
So thank you so much for being here. You know, we are going to walk you through the report tonight. The report is structured around some basic questions. What is social-emotional learning? So we thought it was important to begin by just defining what we mean by that. Who needs this? Is this, you know, we want to dispel any misunderstandings that social-emotional learning is only for some students. Why is it important and why are we interested in thinking about this and studying it now? What did we learn through the research? How have we already begun addressing these issues? In our, this is not something we've never thought about before, so we wanted to acknowledge that. And then the report ends with our findings and recommendations. So we will each speak to a little piece of that and kind of walk you through the document itself and share some highlights. So I'm going to turn it over to Lisa. Lisa's going to begin with, you know, what is social-emotional learning?
Great, thank you, Kim. So if you take a look on page 3 of the report, the committee really spent a lot of time looking at evidence-based research. And we anchored a lot of our learning in the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning work. Their castle is what they're known as. And it's the nation's leading organization around social and emotional and academic learning. And so their definition is in the green box in the middle of the page, and I'm just going to read it to you because I think it's well-stated. It says that "social and emotional learning is the process through which children and adults acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions." So clearly, we know that this is at the center of access for our students. Kids come to us from all different backgrounds, from all different lenses, and we want to equip them not only with the academic habits that they need to be successful, but also with a social and emotional set of skills that allow them to best engage in their learning. So through our research, social and emotional learning is not a one-and-done, it's not a standalone curriculum. It really is a set of principles and a framework that will guide our children in a comprehensive, systemic, K through 12 program of learning. And we'll be looking at teaching things such as self-management, self-awareness, impulse control, responsible decision-making, how to deal with adversity, and how to respond appropriately, and read social cues, so that kids are equipped for life within school and outside of school, whether in their homes or in their communities, and also in diverse communities. So what we found is that through our research, when schools engage in this type of work and make a thorough commitment to it, we see increases in student achievement, increases in overall well-being of children, a decrease in depression and anxiety, and overall decrease in chronic absenteeism, and an increase in graduation rate. So these are all things that we would see as positive benefits for our students and our community. So with that in mind, we began to dive into who is it that we should engage in this work? And simply put, it's everyone in the organization, starting with our adults, spending a year with our faculty and staff, really helping them to understand the importance of social and emotional well-being, and then our students, and by extension, our families and our community. So it is a comprehensive program. We envision it being a K through 12 initiative, and possibly a K through 12 initiative, where students engage in identifying their emotions, garnering emotional intelligence, being able to act responsibly, make responsible decisions, all in support of their access to achievement. You, as a board, have committed, you kind of paved the path for this with your Equity Matters core belief. It really is about inclusion for our students and ensuring that every child feels that sense of belonging and has an outlet for managing and dealing with all of the things that people encounter in life. And so that is our hope, that we spend our initial steps with adults. And then together, modeling for our students and working with parents, really begin this next chapter for Farmington High School in fully developing a comprehensive social and emotional learning experience for our students. So it is imperative that we do this now. Dr. Singer's going to present some compelling evidence that drives the point that this is the time, and we don't have the luxury of missing this time.
So I want to speak to you a little bit about the why. And I know I've been a part of the board before, and you've been very generous with supporting us in developing programming and increasing mental health, but I just want to go through some statistics, which I think really speak to the issues at hand. So this is from the Center for Disease Control, and basically stating that 32% of high school students in this country reported symptoms of depression in the last 12 months, and you can see it broken down by gender. What can be misleading and makes it difficult sometimes to quantify is that males tend to report depression, because there's still a lot of stigma with males in saying they're sad or coming forward. So you see a much higher rate of identified females that state this, but really, that's a third of all of our students. That's a lot of students. When I dug back into the research, what I thought was really important to note is, in 2005, the total number of students who reported this was 8.7%. In 2014, it was 11.5, and now in 2019, we're at 32, which really speaks to the problem, I think, of kids struggling with depression. Excuse my voice. Sorry, I have to make my voice quite clear. You know, another thing that we certainly talk a lot about and look at is the percentage of kids that also self-medicate with alcohol and also other substances. And there's a very high rate of kids with depression or adults with depression becoming alcoholics, alcohol, because they're trying to self-medicate their feelings. And just looking at those statistics, looking at the percentage of kids in each grade that report drinking alcohol in the past 30 days, you know, it is significant. I know I've spoken here before about trauma. It's something that I've seen probably read a lot about, there's a lot of work out there. But just coming to this again from the Center for Disease Control, the national average of children's neglect victims in 2015 was 683,000, or 9.2 victims per thousand children. One in four high school students was in at least one physical fight, one in five high school students was bullied at school, one in six experienced cyberbullying. 19% were injured and 12% physically ill, youth had post-traumatic stress disorder. When you look at those statistics, you know, this is our community too, and this is the type of, you know, issues that we are dealing with in schools. The other thing we always look at too is the sort of intensity of trauma that kids have had. And we now use scales that have been developed to give to children to see how many traumas they've experienced in order to predict long-term effects from therapy. And of course, the earlier we can intervene with kids, the more we can teach them these skills through an SEL curriculum, the better chance that they're not going to have problems when they're adults. Children who have ongoing trauma, experience learning problems, have health and mental, you know, physical health and mental health issues, increased involvement with child welfare, mental health issues, and also long-term health problems as well. So you can see there's a myriad of things that can happen, especially if kids are not Now, these statistics come from the state of Connecticut. So the percentage of high school students who report feeling sad or hopeless almost every day for two or more weeks in a row, so that they stop doing some usual activities. And I think that is the significant point, that depression was such that they were not able to go on with their usual activities. And that's, you know, we are slightly lower than the United States' average, but 27% is more than a quarter of our students. And again, you see the breakdown by male or female, but remembering that this is self-reported, so we tend to get a much lower rate of self-reporting from males. The other thing we often see is males, oftentimes with depression, tend to act it out, so it can look like oppositional behavior, when in truth, it's really an underlying depression. And I thought this was an interesting table to look at, again, from the Center for Disease Control, and it looks at depression and anxiety disorders. And when you look at the charts, you can see, which we thought was significant, is that depression and anxiety tend to be more prevalent when kids are teenagers. But if you look at the behavioral disorders, it's more the 6- to 11-year-olds, and that's really what we see in our schools, that it's the elementary to the middle grades who re-experience or kids that act out, and it tends to decline in high school. So, you know, when you look at these, you think, "That's what we're seeing here." So it merits all of the national data and the state data.
I went too far.
That's okay. All right. And then finally, this is the number of risk assessments we've done at Farmington High School from 2009, 10th school year to the 2018 school year. And last year, we did 76 risk assessments because we were concerned about a student's well-being. And when you look at that, it tells the story of where we are. So all more reason to be teaching kids strategies, teaching kids self-awareness, how to monitor themselves, so hopefully, we can see a decline in kids getting to that point in high school, where we're at a point of doing a formal risk assessment.
And I would just add that on page 5, we wanted to also include the notion that social-emotional learning skills are those kinds of skills that employers are looking for as well. So yes, we are very concerned about the mental health of our children and our young adults. But every Farmington graduate is someday navigating the world, and many, if not most, will be employees somewhere. And these are the kinds of things that they need to function well on a team at work, or manage their own emotions when the boss gives them feedback that they don't particularly like, and those kinds of things. So we want students to feel like they're moving on in the world equipped with the emotional regulation skills to be able to handle what comes next. And Carrie's gonna, or it's Kelly. Kelly is going to talk.
Somehow, that out of work. So I'm going to speak...
This font didn't work.
Oh, here. I'm going to speak to pages 7 and 8 of the report. What did we learn apart? And we did, we learned a lot. So our committee spent time studying, reading, discussing, research, white papers, best practices, and we came up with five guiding principles or key understandings, which you cannot read on this slide.
Veronica will quickly...
Okay, Veronica's going to fix it. But I'll just walk you through it. And the thing that I wanted to say first is that it's one of the things that we discovered that's not on this slide, is that many of our core documents are really reflective of a lot of these guiding practices. So I think that when I speak to these five, they're going to resonate with you and the work that you have done on behalf of students' families, faculty, and staff here in Farmington. And I think you'll recognize a lot of them to be true of what we believe now. So the first one is, "Learning is both self-directed and socially constructed." And think back to what the Farmington High School presentation was all about as well. So students need to feel a sense of belonging to a community, where they feel like they can be themselves, where they feel like they have a sense of autonomy, where they feel like there are safe spaces for them to direct their own learning, while at the same time, they feel a sense of passion to join with others, to do some important work for their school or community. So those two things have to be in place, and that's one of the things that we learned about. And that really made me think about our tagline, "Pioneers, Scholars, Citizens, and Contributors," because that's what we're trying to do. That's number one. The second key understanding is that there's no such thing as an average child. So we do not, in Farmington, teach to the middle. And this made me think about our principles of mastery-based learning, where we make very clear to all students what the expectations or what the standards are. Then we help them understand where they are in relation to the standards, how they can get there, and we create paths and supports for them to be able to move forward towards standards or expectations. And that includes academic, social, emotional, and behavioral competencies. So that was number two. Number three is, I don't really have to say much about this because you saw Farmington High School present about everyone can thrive in a healthy community, and that's what they're all about, is creating that sense of belonging, a place where everyone feels like they belong and everyone feels safe, and that's so important. And one thing that did happen with our district leadership team a few years ago, when we were looking at our school development plan, it used to have academic achievement first, then teaching and learning, then climate and culture. And as a group, we decided to move climate and culture to number one a few years ago, and I think that speaks to number three. The fourth key learning is, "Social and emotional skills can be taught." And they need to be taught explicitly, and Lisa spoke to that earlier. I don't know if any of you got to see Dr. Mark Brackett at convocation, but he did talk about that as well, is that it's really important for adults and students to learn how to understand and recognize and regulate their emotions in order to be able to be successful in school, in career, and in life. And so that's one thing, one area that I think we need to focus on a little bit more is that direct and explicit teaching of social-emotional skills. And I know that, you know, you're working right along with us to develop a new graduate, and that will play in, I think, about that work that we're going to do. And then the last one is, it's really important to embed skills in academic learning. So while we should teach those social-emotional learning skills explicitly, you can't just do it from 11:15 to 12:45 or during period 5, and then, you know, you're done. We have to provide opportunities for students to apply and practice those skills in academic settings. So understanding how to do conflict resolution during your World History class, or on the soccer field, or in the orchestra, so that, you know, you're applying those skills throughout your life. So those are the five, the five key learnings that we came up with. Now I'm going to turn it over to Carrie.
Thanks, Kelly. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you again. I'm glad you were able to participate in something fun tonight. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the celebration of what already is going on in the district, because we felt as a committee, it was so important for us to discuss, "How have we already implemented SEL strategies, emerging practices, and programs throughout the district?" So the way that this section is organized, from pages 9, 10, and 11, you'll see that it's structured through the tiers of support. So tier one, it's really what all students are engaged in. It's high-quality, scientifically-based instruction. And as you can see, what we do is, we gave some examples here throughout the schools here in Farmington. So I just want to highlight a few from tier one. One of them is restorative practice. I know that you've seen that through some of your meetings, actually. You participated in the circle, so you see that. And then onward into the classroom. Also, PBIS, which is something that we continue to have within all of our schools. It looks a little bit different now, but we appreciate that support that you provided to all of the schools early on. And then also now, Ruler, which is a part of something that several of the schools are engaging in now. And that approach, starting the year off with Dr. Brackett here, was an amazing way for us to understand the importance of being an emotion scientist, and it's something that we're going to continue. Then you can look to tier two, which some students are engaged in. And these are for students that are perhaps maybe not meeting the expectations and need a little bit more instruction in an area. Examples of that are the Alternative High School, the Avid Program here at the high school, and then Collaborative and Proactive Solutions, which is the work that we've done with Ross Green. And that also carries us into tier three, because that also is in both areas, because tier three is that smallest section, the fewest number of students, and it's the most individualized support. And as you can see, there are several different ways that we're also supporting students at that high level. I thought the best example was the STEP program here at the high school, the Specialized Transition Educational Program that's here. And students are engaged in work throughout their time here at the high school and their ability to be able to grow as learners, again, having the academic piece in it, because social and emotional learning has been the forefront of what they've been engaged in.
Okay, so as Carrie said, we've been doing a lot. We have a lot of programs beginning to emerge or are being tested in one school, and then will transfer to other schools. So although we've been doing a lot, we do have some recommendations because we have some more work to do. So you see on these last three pages of the report, a set of recommendations, and I won't read through or go through all of them, I just want to highlight a few. As you heard, I think Lisa said that the Ruler training we went to over the summer recommended strongly that we begin with the adults, because if we aren't emotionally intelligent, reflecting on our own feelings, becoming more aware of the ways in which we interact with students, then we're not really ready to implement some sort of program where we're just delivering lessons without really making that emotional connection to what we're doing and why we're doing it. So in true Farmington form, however, the minute you start to make adults in this school system aware of something as important as the emotional basis for learning, we, as administrators, walk up and down the halls, and we hear wonderful things going on in classrooms. We hear teachers having students come together and talk a little bit about how they're feeling this new school year. So we know it makes its way to the classroom pretty quickly, but we want to give the adults permission to sort of begin to learn about all of this themselves. And so on October 15th, as a follow-up to having Mark Brackett at our convocation, we're devoting the entire October 15th PD Day to social-emotional learning. We have about five or six experts coming in. Some of our teachers are making presentations. Certainly, our mental health specialists, some of whom are here tonight, will share some strategies. So that'll all, you know, again, invigorate our focus on social-emotional learning. I think, Kelly, you mentioned visioning, or the idea that we are currently in the I think, Kelly, you mentioned visioning, or the idea that we are currently in the process of refreshing the vision of the graduate. And certainly, I would expect that you'll be seeing some echoes of this work in a refreshed vision of the graduate. We know how important it is. We know employers are asking for it. We know we need to spend some time on it, and so therefore, I would anticipate that we'll see something in our vision of the graduate. We look closely at our discipline data and our PBIS data to say, are we doing the best work we can do relative to student behaviors? We are looking and recommending that we take a more, an approach that includes more restorative practices and supportive practices along the way. Discipline is meant to be teaching. It's not meant to be punishment. We're trying to help our children learn and really understand how their behavior has an impact on others. So that's an important part of this work, is to look closely at our disciplinary practices. And it starts in the classroom. So classroom management strategies, we're providing teachers with really good training on effective routines in their classrooms that'll set the tone for all children feeling like they belong there, and they know what's expected of them, and they contribute to the norms of the classroom, so they really feel like this is a learning community that they belong to. There's a strong connection to our equity work. We see SEL as a powerful lever for creating caring, inclusive, supportive, healthy communities. SEL alone does not address all of the deep inequities in an education system, but it's certainly an important step toward making all children and families feel they belong and can thrive in our school system. We have recommendations relative to the specific supports and interventions we provide for children who need that additional instruction. And so our mental health professionals will take some time to come together and really think about what's working, how do we know, what is the data telling us, how can we strengthen our tiers of support for students? And of course, I guess I would say, most importantly, our partnership with our families. We want our families to know that when their children come to school, we care for them, we want them to be here, and that we want to support them in helping to develop their social emotional skills at home as well. So we're going to try to plan some specific programs for parenting. All of the questions that parents have around the impact of technology on their children's emotional well-being, how to manage friendship conflicts and those kinds of things. So we want to support families, and we think we can do that in a more systematic way by attending to it. So those would be the recommendations I would highlight. Of course, you can see all the specific action steps below each recommendation that we will engage in. And this is not, obviously, I think, a one-year effort. This is a big effort, and it'll take multiple years to really continue to focus on it and work through it. There are many different components and aspects to this work, but we really feel committed to it. We know our teachers feel committed to it. We've had an incredible start to the school year because of the message that we've delivered, you know, well-being matters, if you will, or caring matters, you matter, we matter together. So all those messages came through, I think, in Dr. Brackett's presentation, and we want to continue those good feelings and build a strong sense of community and adequate supports for children who need it through this work. So we're open to any questions that you have for any of us?
Okay, well, you know, thank you, committee. My thoughts when I went through the report this weekend was, you know, it's easy to grasp the what, the who, and the why. For me, the constant challenge was, well, how? Even though we're doing things and we're seeing it forward, it's just as we look as a board, I guess, you know, with capacity, you know, resources, and ability to deliver on this, while also delivering on the core curriculum, standalone curriculum, too. So there's challenges. I mean, I see it, but that's the how was always the struggle, like, how are we doing it today, tomorrow, and in the future?
That's right.
So, but thank you very much. I mean, it was wonderful. I think the who, what, and why falls right into place easily.
Yes.
It's the challenges for us as a board administration is the how.
Well, you'll see some of the how in our school development plans this year. You know, we know we need to take it, you know, step by step, and so you'll see some of those action steps that represent the how in our school development plans.
Open up for questions, Bill.
This is awesome. You know, I know we've had kind of informal approaches, and I'm glad you recognized the work that we were already doing with the tier interventions and things like that. And I just, to have this kind of in one place folded into our overall framework of what we're doing is really an extraordinary thing. And I would imagine probably not many districts are doing it like this at this point in time, right? So, I mean, again, the leadership and what we're trying to do here for kids. A couple of thoughts, questions. The first thing is, you know, we have the special ed PTO now. Have they been kind of looped in on this, or have they reached out? Is there anything we can do to facilitate? Because this is the kind of thing I know they're going to want to have, right?
We certainly can. Our first meeting is next Thursday.
Oh, great.
We only had, you know, one startup meeting last year, but I think it would be totally appropriate for us to bring this in.
Awesome. Because what I like about it is like, you kind of, as you identify, what are the kind of things that are done in each tier? And I think when we went to that initial meeting, one of the challenges that a lot of special ed families have is the overwhelming acronyms and the alphabet soup of everything that's happening. And this kind of helps people organize their head around what is it that would be appropriate for their child, and why are we going to a different level? You know, it's way, way more clear than it's ever been before, so that was awesome. The other observation I had, it was a slide that you talked about with respect to discipline, and I just had a kind of a question about that with respect to equity. And my question isn't necessarily, do you discipline one kid the same as another? My concern is that as we go away from what we consider to be traditional disciplinary, you know, mechanisms or methods, I'm sorry, how does, you know, a child acting out? I mean, do we distinguish between children that are identified versus not identified in terms of their behavior, right? That's my first question. In other words, so we have a child who's identified, and that child is acting out or having an episode, okay? And that can be distracting to the classroom. So then my question really is more about the equity of the other kids in that classroom. So how do we address that? Is that part of what we're doing here? Because my concern is, or my general thought is, is that you have a child who's having an issue, and the kids in that classroom are unable to access their education that day because that child's, you know, episode is so disruptive that you can't really settle the kids. That's probably more common, I would imagine, in lower elementary, you know, than anything else. But just maybe talk about that a little bit.
I think it comes to, you know, the idea of fair versus unequal, right? That fair and equal are not always the same. If a child has an IEP, and there are any kind of behavioral issues, like you said, we always would come back to PPT and consider the whole child, like, what is going on given this child's disability? I mean, that being said, you know, we certainly don't want a whole class disrupted, I mean, certainly on an ongoing basis. So that's always that tricky balance between making sure that you are, you know, working with the individual child and, you know, really keeping, you know, their rights in the forefront for them. But at the same time, everyone has a right to access learning. So that's when you make some shifts or tweaks to a kid's schedule until the time that they get through those behaviors, and then with the hope of always re-entering into the general ed classroom. I don't know if that answers it, but it is tricky. It's tricky. There's no, like, one answer, but certainly, if a child has an IEP, that's always a major consideration in how we might deal with the behavior differently with a child perhaps that has an IEP than one that might not.
It does, it does, I guess, but I guess, and as you said, this is not the first, this isn't the only time you're going to do this. It's going to be an ongoing thing, right? And so you're going to kind of, you're going to train up, you're going to, you know, do professional development to help staff understand, okay, so you might not, you know, so you go to the principal's office, which was the traditional, you know, what maybe we all grew up with as a disciplinary approach, right? Now it's a lot different. And I think as staff becomes more comfortable with that, right, I would think that would also address that concern of, you know, because what's going to be in the parent community of, you know, why is my kid's class different than the other kid's class because that kid's class is being disrupted, like, my kid's class is being disrupted? You understand what I'm, you understand what I'm getting at?
I think so.
So I'm talking about more from the perspective of the kids that are in the classroom where the disruptive, you understand, right?
Well, one of the programs that I think Carrie just mentioned, but I'll highlight again, is called Collaborative and Proactive Solutions. So specifically for incidents like this, where we're really, we're not understanding what was the triggering moment, word, event that made that child act out in that way? So rather than saying, that's bad, that's wrong, you should go to the principal and be punished, we want, as a community of educators, to better understand what we could do differently so that it doesn't happen.
Right.
Not so much, what will that child have to do so he doesn't or she doesn't disrupt these children? I mean, that's very important, but the way you're going to make that happen is to say, let's take some data. Let's look at what happened right before, what happened after, what was said, so that eventually, in really discreetly analyzing these situations, we come to understand, oh, it's when the teacher says, time for lunch, it's a transition. And this is a child who's really struggling with transitions. So a little cueing in advance to say, in two minutes, we're going to get ready for lunch. Why don't you go first, get started? You can avoid the situation. I think that's what we're trying to do here, is be attentive to the emotional component of that behavioral situation, so that the child can stay in the classroom, and that all children can continue to learn.
I mean, the benefit of that is, is that you go right to the root of whatever it is that's causing the episode, so that you're not sending to that child at the office seven times a year.
Right.
Right, which is not going to do anybody any good. So that's, okay, thank you. That's my question. Thanks very much.
Liz?
So I just wanted to thank everyone who was involved in this committee. It's great. I think based on some of the numbers that were in the report, not only was this the time, it seems like you're past the time. So it seems like maybe we're a little behind, not just Farmington, I mean, just society in general. I don't mean to mean you're behind, but society in general is just a little late to the game, because it seems like, you know, it's 2019, and it's a very stressful society we live in. So imagine, you know, you're a student, and you live in this very stressful world with all of this technology and social media, and all of the stresses that we're putting on these students. It's unimaginable, I think, several times a week that I'm so glad I'm not a student now, you know? I mean, it's so different than when we were growing up, and when we were students, the stresses and the worries that are on students these days with just violence and stress of, you know, different colleges and work and social media. It's unimaginable to me what's going through their heads. So, good job. And I know that several years ago, like, many years ago, actually, at this time, there were some people in Farmington, when some of these things were brought up, that said that, you know, well, it's Farmington, what kind of trauma could be in Farmington? And you're smiling, because I think you remember. And, you know, there's trauma everywhere. There's trauma in every household, in every town, no matter where you live, and you have to know that, you have to remember that. And it's important that we do this, and that we think of everyone's emotions and everyone's emotional learning, and we take care of it, because it's very important to get it at the root. Now, I do have a question, actually, though, like, why not preschool? Like, why are we only thinking of preschool, I guess? Because why wouldn't you want to start on the preschool level?
Well, actually, in the pre, we had a group that went through some training recently on trauma in young children, so we are actually also looking at preschool as well. I mean, you can't start too early, really.
Right. I mean, it's just that in the presentation, I think that Lisa said possibly preschool. So it just makes sense to me that you would naturally start in the preschool. That's all.
I think that we are doing some work in the preschool. There's less research on specific interventions more, but just training teachers in sort of looking for trauma, looking for, is the beginning point right now. But I'm sure that as more things come out, we will, you know, dig deeper down. You're right, you can't start early enough.
It just, because the preschooler seems to me that it would be, you know, I mean, it just seems like everything, they're like sponges in the preschool. It would be easier to convert them at that point. But I just think it's very important, and it does have, you know, all of these issues are in Farmington. We have depression, we have trauma, we have the need for social emotional learning like everywhere else. So thank you very much for all of your hard work. It's great.
Chrissy?
All right, I second that. This is a lot of work, and I'm very appreciative of it. I just have one question, though, because I don't, and I'm not trying to get away from all this, but I don't see anything about, like, the balance, keeping the balance of accountability, too. I don't know how to ask what I guess I'm trying to ask, but there's still going to be some type of accountability for, you know, if they are, like, hurting somebody or, you know, but...
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't want...
I just don't see anything about that part of it, so...
I think what the recommendation that deals with supportive and restorative discipline practices shouldn't be misunderstood to mean that we would never engage in consequences or certainly making it clear what is acceptable and not acceptable behavior. Absolutely not. But that more just to fold in some other supports during that process. But I wouldn't want you to think that we're recommending that, you know, we'll never say that was wrong to a child. We're going to say that was wrong, and why? Why was that hurtful? And be able to have two students, you know, talk to each other and make amends, so that then they can move on in a healthy way.
Any other comments? Andrea?
You know, I agree with, you know, what everybody said, my colleagues have said here. But I think it really is important that, you know, when this is communicated to the families in town, that it doesn't just, you know, social emotional learning, and when it's brought out through the curriculum, that it doesn't just apply to kids with behavior problems. It's not just special ed. But it's your child, too. It's everybody. You know, we all, like Liz says, we all struggle with, you know, depression, anxiety. There's different pressures that these kids are under, and I just don't want families to think, oh, this doesn't apply to my child. You know, it applies to all our children in this school district.
I want to add to that, that when you show this slide, you do the rest assessment of the kids we do rest assessment on are not in special education.
Correct, correct. Yeah, yeah.
Anything additional? All right. Lori and Kim, thank you very much as chairs. Lisa, Kelly, Carrie, and everyone else that showed up tonight, just thank you for your efforts. It's wonderful work, and keep it up. Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay, now, back to the new item 5D, the summer school programs report.
This is a report that we provide every year. We've had another exciting summer of enrichment and programming for our students. So Kim's going to provide an introduction to the report, but it is a report that you've seen, and we just keep expanding our summer programming here in Farmington. We're really proud of our summer programming.
So really, I just will say that touring around our summer programs this year, it's always an exciting and fun and happy environment to be in. We had many different programs, as we usually do. You see data and summaries from the Summer Explorations Academy, the FHS Credit Recovery, and other credit-bearing coursework here, offered here at the high school, the extended school year offerings for special services, enrichment programming, which most especially includes Strings Academy, Band Academy, all of our music programming, and as well, our multicultural arts program in collaboration with other districts that is offered here at the high school. So I won't provide too many details, just I'm sure you know. So I won't provide too many details, just, I'm sure you know, it's an amazing set of offerings for Farmington families. We support children who... Oh, the other program that has just continued to blossom is our English Language Learning Program, which is a kind of a subset of the Summer Explorations Academy. You know, our numbers are growing and growing and growing of children in this district who come to us, you know, ready to learn English for the first time. And this summer program is a wonderful way for them to begin to make friends and try out their language skills and do it in a very focused environment with a lot of support and game playing and art and things that get them just excited about being here. And I just, I'm especially in love with that program, just watching the children thrive and how they start the school year feeling much more competent and ready to engage in language with their friends back in school. So we've had a great summer, and I don't know if you have any other questions or things you'd like to know more about.
I don't have any questions, but just, again, sound like a broken record every year.
I know.
It's just fascinating what we accomplished during the summer, so thank you very much. I may have electively gone to summer school if I had all these options.
Yeah, I know.
Really?
But thank you, Kim. It's wonderful. It's a wonderful program. But thank you very much. Any questions for Kim? Thank you. Next item, 5E, Engage Learning Update.
So we have many highlights, and I now, after the SEL report, you can think of these highlights from that lens. So at Westwood's, students are learning and focusing on teamwork, and they created visual models of teamwork, classroom norms, and they're, you know, they're really showcasing teamwork throughout the year with students, very much aligned to socially constructed learning. At Irving A. Robbins, Team E started the year becoming empowered readers and learners. They went, they started this year participating in a book tasting, which is right up Kim's alley.
Yep.
Where students sampled many books and made selections to start off the year and recorded titles for future reading. At Union, kindergartners and second graders are getting to know each other as part of the new year, year-long relationship-building activity with buddy classes. FHS highlighted student activity tonight, but we also had FHS Senior Convocation, and Dr. Hurwitz addressed the senior class and talked about making that positive change that we heard about today, no matter how big or small. And he reemphasized the one school, one community, one us. Jason Welsh, an FHS class graduate of the class of 1996, was the guest speaker, very much aligned to what we heard in our report, that, you know, life has so many twists and turns and, you know, building that resilience for different chapters of your life. And he just provided such an outstanding presentation. It was, the title was Finding Your Passion From Food to Photography. He is an accomplished chef and partner, fork and fire, here in Farmington, so he's back home. He's traveled the world as an accomplished chef. He's also an extraordinary photographer, and it was so nice for him to come back to FHS. He said it didn't change at all, just saying.
Good quote. Good quote. It wasn't a boast. It wasn't a boast.
But we love Senior Convocation because we do typically bring back graduates, and they have wonderful stories to share with our students and lessons learned. So that was really special. East Farms celebrated DOT Day, it's the 10th year of DOT Day. It celebrates creativity, courage, collaboration around the world. You know, 181 countries, 14 million people celebrate DOT Day. And West District's Pollinator Garden is being used by our students. It was something that was put in place last year. The Rotary partnered in that unit, and it was a really nice partnership between the public schools and our Rotary. And so you can see wonderful pictures of students enjoying the garden at West District.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Next item, 5F, Professional Appointments, Retirements, and Resignations. We have none. So next item, item 6, Budget Impact Budget Update. Alicia?
So this, actually, just today, PKF, O'Connor, and Davies, those are our new auditors, were in central office, so we're beginning that process. They'll be on site in the coming days. As I mentioned at our last meeting in terms of budget impact, budget update, a couple of things, areas, self-insurance, sorry, you'll probably hear about that again and again, but it's real, and so, you know, keeping an eye on that, as well as the teachers that we hired for our vacancies in shortage areas and just the volume of teachers we hired this year. So our teacher line is impacted as compared to where we were last year. And then the other area is special education, and that shifts, and we look at it and keep an eye on it, and we're responsive and shifting our needs based on enrollment, changes in student needs, and that adjustment goes both ways. In addition to that, our DLC team is taking a collaborative and conservative approach when we're thinking about our spending this year and focusing on the essentials and, you know, what are mandates right now, and working together as a team. Hopefully, that won't be the situation all year, but that is where we are. We're also keeping note as a team in terms of ways we can improve the budget process and resource allocation as we begin to prepare for the 2020-2021 budget season. So as we're faced with different challenges or questions, we have a whole, kind of a, not kind of, a running list of areas that we want to think about as we prepare for entering the budget process, which will be sooner, soon, this fall. If you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Alicia? Thank you, Alicia.
You're welcome.
Next item, Agenda 7, New Business. There is none. Next item, item 8, Consideration of the Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations Report. Can I have a motion to approve the July-August 2019 financial report?
Motion.
Second.
Alicia? Nothing added?
Nothing really that's different than what I've said.
Okay, yeah, okay. Just, do you have anything to add? Any questions for Alicia? Could there be none? All in favor?
Right.
Aye opposed, abstentions? Item 9, Reported Board Chair, I guess, our next meeting is, what, the 20?
First.
23rd?
First.
First, okay. So, given that, just reminder that we have the new teacher reception on the 24th, so just, we don't let it slip off your radar screen. If you can attend, that would be great. I thought I'd just give a quick update on the building committee. We just met, and looking at, essentially, we've got to the point where the architects have been improvable entering the competitive design process. The Site Evaluation Subcommittee has basically ruled out the Westwood's golf course as the only other viable option, so it looks like the current facility is where the building, whatever project we decide upon will be here. There's communications issues. I don't know, Kathy, you presented that. I mean, it's, you know, we're engaging the PTO leaders, launching the website, social media has launched. We're coming out, we thought it would be good to define a glossary of terms for everybody so they, everybody in the community can understand what we're talking about when we're out there supporting the project, coming up with a logo.
Can I do a video?
Yeah, we're doing a video.
Yes. We, no.
Okay. Because I was so good the first time?
He's so good at, so he could do one. We're doing videos of each area of the statement of need. So I know Scott had done one. I completed a video. They're about, like, a minute and a half to two minutes long. Megan will also do that, students, teachers, so those videos will be coming out.
So really, we're in the competitive design process and sort of really going to start ramping up the community engagement. So that's kind of where we stand right now, so.
And October 16th is really new information. October 16th, from 6:00 to 8:30, we're going to have a community engagement event here, facilitated internally by administrators and teachers with the community. So we're going to be going out and advertising that event, and we will hopefully have areas where you can learn more about each area of the statement of need, and it'll be different parts of the building. So you also have the opportunity of touring the building as you go from one session to another. And then we'll have a feedback session at the end where people really prioritize different areas that they think are most important for the building committee. And that's, you know, one of, I'm sure, additional, we'll have additional opportunities, but we want to engage the community very early on in the process.
Any questions?
Yeah, there's a question. Do you ever put it on the outside, what's it called?
The signboard?
The signboard for the high school.
That was specifically raised at the last meeting and will be, you know, added out there.
Because I think about it all the time.
Yep, no, that was a specific point, thank you, but it was.
Okay.
Andrea, yep.
Just a follow-up, and the planning and zoning regulations, when that sign was approved, limit the amount of messaging we can do, or is that no longer the case?
No, we have a limit to what we can do, but I think we're well within that limit.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
So, yeah.
Thanks. I was thinking the same thing, but that's cool.
Okay. Next item, 10, Consideration Committee Reports, 8, Personnel Negotiations. After a somewhat deliberate process with a number of meetings and sessions, we have, I guess the best way to describe it, tightened up most of the contractual issues. There's still some outstanding ones, but we've been pushing those issues down the road over the sessions. Tomorrow is, be the watershed event where we enter into mediation. So, and that is when we will start tackling salaries and benefits and really, you know, have hopefully a meaningful and successful session tomorrow, so we're looking forward to that. Policy, Christine?
We are scheduled to meet on the 7th, and I can take curriculum, too. We're scheduled to meet on the 21st before the board meeting.
Okay. And then D, Communications, Ellen?
We're going to be meeting after the new teacher's reception.
Okay. Okay. Item 11, Reported Committee Liaisons, correct. No report focus. Bill?
No report. I didn't get a chance. I saw Ed was here. I don't know if there's any meeting, I haven't been, any meetings announced, but I'm on the list, so if you hear anything, let me know.
Okay. Farmington Public Schools Foundation, well?
Same. I wish I had gotten rich because I haven't heard anything about meetings there either, so I'll check on that.
Yep, but, and thank you for the foundation's efforts again. Interscholastic Athletics, Christie?
I'm waiting to see when the meeting is scheduled. Nothing as yet.
Okay. Chamber of Commerce, Michelle. Green Efforts, Andrea?
Next meeting's October 1st.
Okay. Cafeteria Advisory Committee. We finally dropped ad hoc, right?
Right. Next meeting is, I just got the meeting. 11:18 at 5:15 at Westwood's in the library, the office, like, the classroom off the library at Westwood's before our meeting.
Okay.
That, for a minute, I thought of the game Clue.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
It's on with the candlestick.
Liz on the roof of the library.
They're almost there.
Is there a conservatory in the Westwood's?
Yes, open the envelope, there will be a candlestick.
Health and Wellness, Ellen?
No report.
Okay. And Building Committee, we have covered, so we're all set. And item 12, Executive Session, we have no, nothing for Executive Session.
No.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
Right.
All in favor?
Right.
Aye opposed, abstentions? We are adjourned.